We'll start without Melvin.
Um, we'll call the meeting door and start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one way change, under that, individual, delivery team, and technicals for all.
Thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. Uh, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything, Dan?
I have nothing, just Dwayne.
Nothing.
Ryan?
No.
Okay, I got a couple of things. We're gonna add I two, an update on the ambulance service for informational purposes only under I two. And then add J one, under the engineer's report. Uh, there's road closure update where the Thompson Construction is, just an update on that. Then I'm gonna move, uh, the public hearing right to the beginning after the approval of the agenda, so, uh, Mr. Stroll can get to another activity. So with that, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Out of the consent agenda, any questions for administration on the consent agenda or comments, Tim?
Move to approve.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we will do the public hearing for the chaotic good brewing, uh, brewers off sale and taxing liquor on sale taproom license and Sunday liquor license. So, um, I would open that public hearing for anybody from the public that would have any comments on that liquor license being issued. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Let me get, open up my thing here. Alright, so this has been on our agenda before. Any questions from council or concerns that you've had since the last time we've had a chance to look at it? It's pretty straightforward, additional liquor license for the new taproom in town. Mr. Stroll, do you have anything you wanted to add or change or anything else? Okay?
We're almost there.
Okay.
What is that?
Okay.
You have, what, you have an open date yet?
Um, it all depends on how fast these licenses can get back to these states.
Okay.
Perfect.
Exciting.
Thank you.
As soon as they get back, we're ready to roll.
Okay. Alright, with that, uh, with no questions, I entertain a motion to approve the issuance of the liquor license.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to your new business being in town. Appreciate, yeah, I bet you do. I bet you are. Okay, um, on to public forum. I've got one thing for public forum, uh, John Talcott.
Well, you know I'm John Talcott now, and, uh, I live at 306 Fifth Avenue Northeast. I'm, uh, on the unofficial detour, so most of you are probably driven by my house. But, um, it's been an interesting summer. Seen a lot of traffic, a lot of different trucks, a lot of different antique cars with out mufflers, but one of the other things I've seen quite often are fire trucks, emergency vehicles. And, I don't, whenever I see fire protection trucks and that in a parade or, you know, at a fire, I'm reminded of a passage I read a long time ago, and I'll probably get it wrong, but it was, "The most stirring image that best depicts man's humanity to their fellow man is a fire truck." And, I, I just think of that every time I see one. And, you know, our community has volunteer firemen, and they're our neighbors, our friends, sometimes they're even distant relatives. And when I see them on the equipment, I think politically, I offer them all of my support. I owe them that. They are willing to risk their lives to help our community when we're in the most dire circumstance. So, I feel like I, not only owe them politically, but also, uh, financially. And so, tonight, I first want to start out by saying, I am totally in favor of what the city is trying to do, trying to accomplish by modernizing our fire department. And, I am thoroughly willing to pay the taxes to do that, and even if there is an opportunity to purchase bonds, I would like to participate in that. So, the question that I guess is, uh, I'm kinda jumbled up because I've had a lot of questions running through my head. But, um, you know, some people think they don't need to pay taxes. They can have everything they want without paying taxes. Unfortunately, that's not true. But I guess what I want to stress too, is I'm not here in an adversarial position to you folks. Um, I respect all of you, every one of you. I mean, you try to make decisions and they're hard to make, and my dealings with Dwayne especially, you have a system where you weigh the pros and the cons, and you do the best you can for the community, and I respect that. It's not easy to make decisions. I'm finding that out because I have to make a decision. Uh, ten days ago, I viewed the sample ballot, and, uh, thank you for offering to continue serving our community. I know I couldn't do it. I know it's not just two meetings a month, because I looked through some packets, trying to trace this whole issue, and it's overwhelming. It truly is. So, thank you. Um, looking at that ballot, it appears we'll have a peaceful transition in January, at least in Casson, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, but now why I'm here tonight. Like I said, in the last ten days, I've been asking myself a lot of questions, and I finally realized I asked too many questions. And I got a call from Ms. Lent this afternoon, and I appreciate that. Thank you for returning my call. Appreciate being able to talk to you, and deciding, after speaking with you, that really, I have to just boil this down to one question, and that will determine my actions. And, uh, let's see, I wrote it down so I wouldn't get it wrong. Okay. Is it the official legal position of this council that the 2022 Casson Public Safety Referendum follows the correct format outlined in Minnesota Statute 275 dot 60 without omissions? And I guess I'd be happy to engage in a dialogue on that. I, I don't need an answer tonight, but I would like an answer with, not by sundown, but, um, uh, in the next day or two, please. Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Thanks, John. I'll get with Tim and we'll get, we'll get back to you.
Alright. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, on to committee report. Uh, Park Board recommendation to increase 2023 Casson Aquatic Center fees, hours, and programs, number one.
Including your packet, you've got information that the Park Board has reviewed twice now, and, um, they've taken into account a lot of feedback from members of the public. Uh, we had a number of, uh, different comments during the year regarding the hours of operations and the fees and that sort of thing. So, we've got that information included, and hopefully, um, you know, you've had a chance to review it, and of course, Ryan, and you know, he could speak to it as well, having been through those meetings. Um, it is, you know, what they're looking at is a lot of changes. Um, you could see in there the numbers, overall, the, uh, the aquatic center performed within budgetary guidelines, and Nancy, you could speak to that if you'd like a little bit.
Well, the recommendations are, you know, based off the other fees that are being required with the new systems. We want to eliminate those, and it's been, the Park Board incorporated those into the other, uh, charges. So, um, I, you know, they think it's real reasonable. It was a net change essentially to the budget, and then, um, the hours and the programs have been, um, you know, the Park Board and, and Tim have just taken all of that into consideration, as those comments were received this year, and in the goal of, um, fully communicating, we want these things in place, so it's all set before the new year.
That's right. And so you can see on the, the first page there, you can see our budget this year. We anticipated a loss of about a hundred and six thousand dollars, and we ended up having a loss of ninety-two thousand. So, actually, it performed, uh, better than budgeted, and, and our aquatic center serves as a service for the community. It's not intended to generate a profit. We love to close the gap whenever we can, but, uh, that is what it's there for. The hours were probably the biggest, uh, item that people had discussion points this summer about, and one of those is related to the fact that we did swimming lessons in the evenings. We had a lot of positive comments. There were a lot of folks who worked during the week. They really appreciated having that opportunity to come and take their, their children. We also had some folks that, uh, felt like it should have been open to swim in, in the evenings, and that certainly is understandable. Um, so, they made some adjustments. Ronnie's and the Park Board recommending these, uh, changes in hours, so there'll, there'll still be a few, uh, night lessons. I think there's one week, one, one week or two weeks of night lessons the whole summer. But other than that, um, they'll be moving those lessons into the morning shifts again. Um, they're also gonna be taking a look at tweaking it so that they won't be allowing it to close for, uh, evening rentals on Saturday nights. It'll be open for, uh, open swim instead. Um, I don't know, if there's any other questions you wanted to bring up there, Ryan?
Yeah, Ronnie, you've gotten a lot of feedback about not having those evening times, but we also included some evening swim lessons, just like last year, but we adjusted some of the times, so that families that could go a little earlier could have four thirty, four fifteen swim lessons, but still have some of the six PM later swim lessons as well. So there's, they're separated every other week based on the times, because we felt like parents wanted to come watch those swim lessons, but we also were cognizant of, there's T-ball, there's baseball, there's other activities that happen throughout the night, so it kinda varies when those times are. We did make an adjustment, I don't see it on here, for the 2023, uh, fees, for the season fees for passes. It's in our minutes, but it's not in, on the sheet that's in F1. Uh, the family non-residence, two fifty, and the single-family non-resident is one twenty-five. So we talked to Park Board about how a lot of our families within the community are already paying different taxes for the, for the pool, so those fees should be maybe a little higher for families that are coming from outside the area, and we saw some pools in the area that aren't gonna be open next year, so that this would be a good time to maybe raise those rates to compensate some of those costs of families coming in from other areas that will not have a pool next pool season. As we know, costs are going up, and as we've added new programs to the pool and ways to maintain it.
Okay. Any questions for Ryan?
It's not to do with the hours and the, but it's, do the, is the Park Board and the pool gonna be working more? Last year, or this year, I guess you wanna call it, there was a lot of issues where everybody said you had to pay with credit card, and then you got there and they were taking money.
We will be allowed to pay both, I believe.
Yes.
You can pay online ahead of time as, for your membership online, but when you go to the concession stand, you should be allowed to use both.
Be good to advertise that, too.
Yeah, 'cause there was a lot of mass confusion of that.
I think part of the problem was we were running off change at the pool throughout the summer, where they couldn't make change.
Yeah, I mean, the, uh, Park Board stance last year was strongly in favor, as you know, um, of going to this cashless system. You know, it's been implemented in other cities in our area. Chatfield's a good example, I think. Did you guys go over to St. Charles, too, or where?
I only called Chatfield.
Okay. Um, so that was the encouragement, because they found it to be more, you know, productive. It's kind of what the school uses for the life program, that sort of thing. We did find that, that, uh, there are some customers that are very hesitant to utilize the, the credit card system, and so, uh, we wanna be able to serve as many people as possible, but also limiting the amount of cash that's on hand for our lifeguards after doing.
I get that. But if, if you're gonna do the cash and the cashless, is it where the city is gonna change it so they're not charging a fee for people to use the credit card?
That's, that's, that decision has already been made.
So that, that, there will not be a fee?
The city will pay the fee.
Okay.
Customers won't.
'Cause that was some of the people's concern, was they didn't wanna be paying an extra four percent to, when they're allowed to use cash, so, you know.
No, I, that was definitely something that was taken into account in our revised rate structure.
'Cause I, I know, like, when you just mentioned the school doesn't, 'cause the school doesn't charge a fee to charge.
Sure.
Which, then it makes it easy for people to gladly add the money or pay the fees. But there was just things that were brought up.
No, I mean, and that, and those are all good feedback items. I think, uh, the, the Park Board tried to take those all into account, as far as I know, when they were making their changes to this year's, uh, fees and also the, the hours of operation, so. Um, one other issue that, you know, you've got the sheet in there talking about, we are still, uh, not, we still don't have a pool manager. So it's definitely a situation that is, you know, somewhat problematic for us. Um, there are some options there, but, um, we're having a lot of issues with the lifeguard training, just not a lot of classes that are offered, uh, as well. The sheet that's including your packet talks about, um, Ms. Rude going up to Fargo, but she's not gonna be doing that this year, so instead, we're gonna have to guide our lifeguards towards going to Oatana individually to get trained there at their aquatic facility, because, um, you know, we're just running into a, you know, so we have that job posted. It's posted, it's been posted for a month. We haven't seen a lot of, or any interest, as far as I know, Linda.
No.
So, we're not sure exactly how we'll be dealing with that next year, but that's something that we'll continue to, to let you know if there's some changes there.
Well, didn't it say somewhere that was an option, maybe you had two assistants working at the time?
Yeah, and to be honest with you, the model, the way it operated this year was certainly a very delegated, uh, role for our pool manager. Um, she wasn't not present as much as historically, uh, our previous manager had been. And there's some pluses to that. You see some growth in the assistant managers, but there's also some negatives, where we did see some, uh, possible training improvements that could have been made, and so, it worked this year. I don't think it's probably the best option long-term, um, but it just depends on what kind of staff we have as well, so.
Okay, anything else, Dan?
No, that's all I've got. So we are looking for approval on those, uh, hours, operations, and rates tonight.
Okay. Any other questions from, Mel? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the recommended, uh, fees, hours, and programs.
I'll make that motion, and somehow we can post it to the public.
Sure. Soon and later. Yep. Alright, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Park Board recommendation to change the height requirements to use the high dive board. I imagine this was prompted by a, a situation?
We had two situations this summer that prompted this discussion. They did try to do some things last year, for example, with, uh, the water slides requiring that families couldn't go down with their children. That was always a rule, but we didn't, we're trying to enforce these rules more, and this is one of them, putting a sign up, having a lifeguard at the top of the diving board, the tall diving board, instead of in the chair. So they'd run that same rule where they're telling who they can jump off the two diving boards, but they would be on the taller diving board to help make sure that if someone does choose to get too afraid to go off the diving board, that they have assistance, uh, 'cause that was one of the issues, was coming back off the diving board. But the high requirement should help protect against the other issue. It's just, the concern is how that will be felt within the community whose kids have been going off that diving board for three or four years that are under that height requirement.
I mean, we had incidents, and I think as long as people are made aware that this is a safety, I mean, again, I'm a big proponent of telling people why we have rules. And as long as they know the why of it, which is, we don't want your kid to get injured, even though your kid has so far avoided injury, even though they're too short, too young, this is what we have to do. And when we have injuries, then that impacts all of us.
Oh. So we went back and forth on the fifty-six inches height requirement, but that was what was recommended, uh, to us, by the Life Control Representative from the League of Minnesota Cities.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Are we gonna have, uh, the Disney height?
There will be something, uh, Ronnie said they will create something so that kids know, but we know that kids won't always follow the rules, and we're not going to be the checks and balances, so the lifeguard at the top isn't going to have a tape measure measuring each kid, just, just to double check. There's some obvious, oh, you're not tall enough, but there's some that may be questionable. They're not going to be sitting up there and monitoring it, but it will be at the bottom of the diving boards that kids should know.
But it's four foot eight or at least twelve years of age?
We did not go with the age, because not every child is at the age of twelve fifty-six inches. So we thought the inches was better than the age.
Okay.
And that was the debate, too, that the, uh, the Park Board had, because I think the age guidance on the slides is forty-eight inches. Um, so, you know, they did talk about lowering that down, but they also took into account what the league's insurance specialist had recommended, and she had done quite a bit of research, uh, other communities that have gotten that. I think that having the lifeguard at the top of the, the high dive will probably be the most beneficial thing, because that'll just be a better presence, and I think that they agree with that. But, yeah, that was their recommendation, was to go with fifty-six inches of height.
And Ronnie did mention another option of purchasing something to go around the high dive, but I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was around ninety thousand dollars is a possible estimate, to purchase something that would protect along the sides. One of the children fell, walking out was too short, fell through, would help to prevent that, and then that would probably decrease the need for the height requirement, I would assume, but that's a, add to cost. Would it be cheaper to buy a sign and have the rule in place versus purchasing something like that, or would we wanna do both?
Try the rule change first, and that should alleviate ninety-nine percent of the risk, anyway. Any other comments or concerns, questions?
Just again, make sure we.
Communicate it.
Communicate, communicate, you know. No matter how many times we say it, somebody's gonna still say they don't know, but if we can.
We can put together a social media post, too, aquatic center changes for 2023, and get that out as soon as possible, and that way the parents can talk to their kids, say, you're not tall enough to use the high dive.
Well, attach it to the rates and the hours and the passes and everything, so that it's.
And there's a way even to throw it up at the school on there. Or the kids always look at.
I think what we'll probably do is, um, Facebook, and we probably will try and post it to the Casson Parents page as well, because that tends to be where we solicit a lot of our feedback. Um, I also think we could, what we could do is, we could send it out to everybody who gets the utility billing as well, and that would be, you know, that way hopefully they get it through one medium or another, 'cause it is hard to get to, you know, some folks just don't read the paper, or they don't get it on Facebook or whatever.
And then if anybody signs up for, uh, pass.
Part of the package.
Remind them again.
Yep.
Of what the hours are, absolutely.
I mean, no matter how much we say it, yeah.
Entertainer motion to approve the height requirement to use the high dive board?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second? Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Very old business, health insurance.
Uh, so including your packet, you've got an Excel spreadsheet, uh, and I'm gonna let Linda talk about this a little bit more, because she's been dealing with, directly with Bill Singer, who's our, our agent. Um, as, as the, uh, council's aware, the healthcare was budgeted at twenty percent. We had a peep renewal that came in, I think, forty-nine, forty-eight and a half percent, something like that. So, uh, seeing that substantial increase in cost, we, we did look at, uh, some other options, trying to get back to that target the council had set. So, um, we've got a couple of options for you to, to view tonight, to take a look at. Um, as Ryan was mentioning before the meeting, you know, it's that time of year, kind of with insurance renewals and that sort of thing, so, um, Linda, you wanna take it away?
Sure. At the very bottom of the spreadsheet, you will have our current and what it's going up to, which is a forty-nine percent increase. This is all, um, this whole spreadsheet is just city cost. So we looked at other, um, outside of peep, and we're a small group, so we can get into, Blue Cross will take us, and there was a forty-four hundred, eighty-eight hundred dollar deductible, uh, plan, that was, the access plans include mail, the high value does not include mail. So those are the difference in those two columns. And then there was also a twenty-five hundred, five thousand, uh, deductible plan that had the access and the high value. The one we are recommending is the twenty-five hundred, five thousand access. It's a twenty-two point eight percent increase. I know we budgeted twenty percent. We have a lot of people who, who use mail, I mean, because it's in our backyard is what makes our costs so high, is because people want that included in their plan. Uh, if we go with a no mail, mail and use the high value plan, mail would be out of network even with a referral. So, even the, the higher, um, deductible would be twenty-three point six percent, because with the higher deductible, the city is contributing more towards the deductible. So that's what makes, I mean, it seems like the twenty-five hundred, five thousand plan is, is nice and a gold plan or something, but it's better for the city, because you're, when the city is contributing half of the deductible, that's a lot less. Everything is age-based, too, now. Before, we were going single-family, it's all age-based. We couldn't get a quote that wasn't age-based.
You'd wanna keep that, that premium. You don't wanna have to have a bill at mail, and then you have to go to OMC and then have an OMC bill. I don't think we'd wanna do that to people, so I'd agree with the city premium.
There are some things that, I mean, I, I am an OMC person, but there are some things that OMC does not do, that you are going to get referred to mail, period, end of story.
Right. You have to have mail as an option, which is where we live. Yep.
Well, and I think that's kinda like our current plan, so, you know, I participate in OMC, we offer mail in OMC. With OMC, you know, you can get that referral and then it's in-network, so it actually works out. I mean, for a lot of standard procedures, OMC is very, very good, but like you said, if there's a higher-risk procedure, cancer or something like that, they, they're gonna try and shunt you over, and without offering that, I think it would be, uh, very difficult for us in terms of retaining employees. I think a lot of people would look at other options.
That's, yeah. First of all, that's, that's not being a good employer in this area, so. No, good work, Linda, thank you. Makes sense to me with the twenty-five hundred, five thousand, 'cause like you said, with we're contributing half the deductible also, so.
I mean, it's actually cutting down what the employees are getting right now, because right now, the employees are getting, you know, the five thousand, ten thousand deductible.
Right.
So, it, it's actually putting, the employees are gonna have to put more into their HSA than they had to now.
Yep. Any questions anybody has, or comments, concerns?
I agree on the good employer thing and needing that required mail, and, so, I'm good with the recommendation.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm just confused trying to read all this, so. And make sure.
Well, I mean, I wanna make sure you have any questions, because I want you to be comfortable with it. So I think, Linda, try to lay it out so that, you know, you have, you have kind of the current, and then you've got the two Blue Cross options, and then you have the peep option. So the peep option is to the left.
Yellow.
Right, well, so, uh, yellow is our current, right?
Right.
And then you've got the peep option. If we stayed with peep, it, it would go from thirty-eight thousand or forty-one thousand premium to fifty-seven, five, seventeen, sixteen. And then there's the two higher deductible ones. There's the, the one in kinda the mob and the one in blue. Um, and, I mean, it's relatively close, if you look at twenty-three point six percent versus twenty-two point eight. It's a trade-off. You've got the higher contribution versus the lower premium, but, I mean, it is, you know, point eight percent cheaper, and it also kinda keeps people in line with what they're kind of anticipating or used to in terms of the coverage that they're used to.
Well, and then the, the lines highlighted in yellow are ones that will drop off at the end of the year, so they won't really even be included in next year's premium, and it all depends on who we hire. It just.
It's all age-based.
It could be a, a crap shoot that way.
Did the Blue Cross look at the ages, or did peep? Switching to ages.
The, the Blue Cross was only age-based.
Yep, 'cause peep doesn't give you any information.
Right. Blue Cross is all, it, your premium is based on your age.
Correct.
Period. If you're fifty-three one year, the fifty-four next year, it's just an automatic increase.
But we are also, um, a high-usage group.
Right.
So there were some that wouldn't even look at us. The Southeast Service Co-op wouldn't even give us a bid.
We went through that data.
Yep. So.
And so you've talked to other staff, and the far-right is the option that most people are preferring?
It, yeah, I think that's the one that, that we anticipate.
I don't know what color that is.
The one, the lighter mob color, yep.
Peachy. Peachy.
Peachy.
The peachy color.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't know what color. The twenty-five hundred, five thousand. Yeah, okay.
There's enough wiggle room in how we laid out our proposed budget and everything to cover the difference?
There should be.
There will be.
People have to have insurance.
Okay. I don't know if we have much other choices besides that. So thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Yep. Any other comments or questions, concerns?
Yeah, I think we're looking for a motion to approve the
Two-year Blue Cross.
Two years. Two, it's a, but the rates adjust annually, based on your age.
Adjust annually. There was no two-year contract in this.
Oh, no, it's a year-to-year.
Year-to-year, okay.
All right. So I retain a motion to approve the option in the mob with the twenty-five hundred, five thousand, and the mail option.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again. On to new business, power cost adjustment rider, H1.
All right. So you've got a couple of documents in here. This is related to our cost increases here based on the issues we had with transmission costs. You'll remember earlier this year, we got a report that we were gonna have additional three hundred thousand this year and three hundred thousand next year in terms of extra costs. So the council chose to absorb that. But I think going forward, the, you know, council had said, what can we do to adjust that? So I did include some information in there. I included information from what Excel does. And you can see Excel, that page there where Excel has a number of different rate riders they add. And so on a normal Excel bill, you would see line items for each one of these. So I included our city bill, a copy of a city bill, example of the city bill, and what we include on the electric bill for that. So you can see there that we have, you know, water sewer, you know, conservation, electric tax, electric transit tax. So what a rider would be, would be another line on a bill. And it would be, in this case, we'd be looking at a power cost adjustment rider. So what we would do is, you've got the formula there as well for how it would potentially work. We would basically be recovering our cost of power when we have these kind of fluctuations. It's not unusual. Most utilities regularly do that. We typically just do two rates throughout the year. We do a summer rate and a winter rate, so we haven't had that in the past. But, you know, one thing that I talked about in my report a little bit is that we're also trying to hedge by buying some capacity from some of our other utility partners. I mean, that was really the the issue is that, you know, Casson doesn't have any capacity. We don't generate any power. So we are exposed to the market position. Now, historically over the last ten years, that's been very beneficial to us, because we don't have the legacy costs from generation. You know, we don't have to pay for generators. We don't have to house them. We don't have to have staff that maintain them. So that's been beneficial for us, because generators are very expensive. Wyndham, which is in our utility group, is purchasing two of them, and they're they're both about four and a half million dollars apiece. So, you know, you can buy a lot of power on the market or a lot of capacity for that kind of price over time. A couple of the cities in our area, Sleepy Eye and Springfield are both long on capacity, so they have more generation than they actually need to cover their position. So my hope would be to purchase some of our generation capacity from them directly. And so that way, we wouldn't be as exposed to the energy market. So they do the auction in April each year, and, you know, that's when we have to say, okay, is it long or short? And the way that energy market works is either the, either there's gonna be enough capacity or there isn't. And this year, there was a big, I want to call it scare, but the whole idea was, oh, we're gonna have, well, in blackouts. And that was kind of in the national news. Now, it didn't end up happening, because the days when it was really warm and really hot, we also had a lot of wind, you know. And it's, it worked out that the the peak power times matched very well with the renewable capacity, because so much of the market's going to renewable now. And I don't want to belabor this, but I want to explain what this is, because it would be an adjustment to our rates. Anyway, so we're looking at trying to purchase some of that, so that at least I'll know what the cost is. So as I said, either it's zero, if there's enough capacity in the market, then, you know, nobody's buying the extra capacity, because it doesn't matter. So either it's zero or it goes to max price, because either it's worth nothing or it's worth everything. And so this last year, our our cost went from, you know, fifteen cents a kilowatt to two hundred and thirty-six dollars. I mean, huge increase in cost, because it went from basically being worth nothing to being worth everything. And I don't know what the market will do next year, but I'm hoping to get at least four megawatts of capacity from our utility partners. So that would cut our exposure from eight to four. So we might still have to buy some on the market. And then this would apply to that part that we purchased on the market. It would be a cost of power adjustment that we would add into the to the rate structure. The nice thing about it would be, in a year where we don't have any, you know, capacity issues, it wouldn't apply. It wouldn't be something that we typically utilize. So anyway, there's information in there about it. I anticipate that before the end of the year, we'll bring it up again, and we'll have a bigger discussion about it. But I just wanted to share it with you, kind of how it works, what it talks about. And then I also included that congestion map, because I thought it was interesting. You can see summer of twenty-one versus summer of twenty-two. The issue for us is, we start to get into that southeastern Minnesota where we're still on the line. In twenty-one, they had a lot more issues in Minnesota. This year, because of the extra wind, you actually saw a negative market a couple of times for the actual energy. Right when you get to the Wisconsin border, it dies. So I think that the new transmission lines that are coming are gonna be a real positive for the overall power market. So that's all. If there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to take those.
Should come back for two thousand twenty-three, so we can get an idea what that would be if we have to do it.
That's right.
And so we know a number.
Yeah. And basically, with that formula there, we're taking the additional extra costs, and we're spreading it over the the kilowatts purchased.
Sure.
And what gives us an average price we would end on as a rider.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. The administrators' report. Number one, tennis court information.
Sure. Just one second here. Okay. A couple of items. General election obviously coming up. So far, I think that the November first, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a school board referendum, or a school board debate. So that'll be interesting, or a forum, I think, that'll be interesting to see. Parking rec, we talked about a number of those items there. We have representatives from the Girls Softball Association who was there that were looking for some additional equipment. It's not currently budgeted, so the park board recommended that they talk to the joint ventures, so it sounds like that might be a possibility. I'm gonna talk a bit more about the tennis courts. The park board reviewed those. They had a few questions, which we provided some answers for, and those were emailed out. And they recommended a positive recommendation on that court to back to the council. Tree lighting is coming up. That's gonna be scheduled downtown this year. That's the plan, and it would be during Christmas in Casson to coincide with that. So we're expecting to have that. And then the aquatics center we talked about. We compassed, I kind of briefed you on that already. We had a visit from Congressman Finstad. It would very well, we will present our flood relief improvements plan to them. And also, there were a number of questions. People asked him about a variety of topics. Folks from Manorville Dodge Center and Byron were here as well. So that was a, that was very good to hear some of his feedback. Healthcare costs. And then the, there'll be an informational meeting next week on the second of November, before the regular EMS meeting for folks who are having questions about the the project. So that's what I've got in my report.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Where will the school board candidate forum be?
Forum room. I believe it's at the forum room at the high school.
Forum room.
I think it's seven o'clock.
Forum room, seven o'clock.
I'm gonna report as well.
Okay. What did Congressman Finstad have to say about our flood improvement plan?
Well, he wanted to know how he could help. And so what we talked about was the earmarking process, where representatives can basically write a bill, a small bill, that goes into a larger omnibus bill. And we've asked him to write up something for us pending the bonding action from the state of Minnesota. We know that the bonding bill that would have passed last year, we felt like it had a good chance of being included. And that certainly is an easier process, just doing it through the state of Minnesota than it would be to have the federal involvement. But that would, that was his perspective, is that it would be something he'd be looking at in the new year, if pending the outcome from the state of Minnesota.
So if the state of Minnesota doesn't step in, then?
Yeah. And I don't know that he felt that the entire amount would be something he'd be able to go for. I think typically, those earmarks tend to be a little bit smaller. We're looking at a four million dollar ask.
Right.
But he was much, he was very interested in it. And and he was doing a listening tour. There were a number of projects. There was a joint sewer project up in Pine Island. They're looking for kind of the same thing, some federal feedback there on if there'd be some additional funding available, opportunities. So I think that's kind of where his stance was, looking at the earmarking.
I wanted to be here for that, but I was quarantined. I was trying to think of the word.
We're, I was glad, you know, we did have a, we had some members from the Chamber of Commerce here. That was good. A lot of discussion about just a variety of topics. The the mail service was one that got hit on a couple of times, and how the federal government needs to get the mail service lined up a little better. I know that's been a complaint I've heard from a lot of people in town. And healthcare was a was a big one too, obviously. So and then inflation. Those were kind of the biggest topics I think they kind of laid into, so.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see here. Update on the ambulance service.
Okay. And just to highlight the tennis court just a little bit too, before I delve into that ambulance component. You've got some information in here. You've seen it before. The recommendation was to have the company install it. There were a number of questions that the park board asked about warranties. So the surface is warranted, and they they do the repairs there as well as the, they would be installing it as well. So you've kind of got that information in there. And I just wanted to see what your guidance was on what our next steps are for that. You know, are we looking at a a project that'd be funded out of a current account? Are we looking at funding it in next year's budget? Or what were your thoughts on on that, if we want to proceed with that project at all?
Well, it was gonna be a question I had for you, is what, what's the funding mechanism or source?
Well, I mean, we do have some reserve funds. There could be a transfer made from, you know, for example, liquor store or something like that. Otherwise, we'd be looking at trying to utilize funds that are already existing.
Let's see where our budget comes in for two thousand twenty-two. That December, kind of first week of December, we're looking at where we are year-to-date to see what that stabilization fellow would be.
Sure.
And then decide then, because we've got a few other things to add to that list too. So if that makes, there's no rush to order this or do it.
Yeah. I mean, I I think that their their price will probably go up in the new year. I would expect it will.
Sure.
But I probably won't, I won't anticipate to be a huge change, probably five percent or something like that.
But by December, we should be able to
Hold on, one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I would expect it to be installed this winter. It'd probably be in the spring.
Does that sound good to tell us to wait till we get our updated where we are for twenty-two actual, and then get our budget approved for twenty-three and figure out from there?
It was a hundred twenty?
Hundred twenty-one, hundred twenty-two.
Hundred twenty-one. And it has multiple pickleball courts, so apparently people really like that.
Yeah.
They've been pushing for that for a while now.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Um, little closure.
You mentioned the next item, which was that ambulance. So I've intended, and I've tried to keep you in in touch in terms of this rural ambulance service. The Dodge Center ambulance service is going through some significant financial difficulties. So especially in terms of funding their capital. So and Nancy, thank for, thankfully attended last month. She had some good feedback. They're basically looking at two options, which is, one of those is a joint powers group, which would include the townships and the cities that are in the service territory. The other one would be a special taxing district, which would be, it would have its own board, but it would not be something the city levied for then. It would be levied separately. So I'm gonna have some information for you in our next packet, because I do need some feedback from you on these options. You know, if you'd like to pursue one of the other, you know, they, definitely Dodge Center is definitely interested in in moving this forward. They'd like to have something prepared by June of next year, because potentially then it would go to the the county for the creating the, you know, if it's a special tax district, it would have to go to the county by then to get those certified for twenty twenty-four. So that's, their timeline is really, it's pretty strict, actually, six months. So, you know, and it's an issue, certainly, we want to have good ambulance coverage in in Casson. But just wanted to let you know that push is gonna come to shove here, and, you know, I'm gonna need your feedback, so.
Is that our only option for ambulance services, the Dodge Center ambulance service? Is there a strict territory that they
We are in their service territory.
So we couldn't look elsewhere?
You know, I don't know that the city would get involved with it in terms of if if we chose not to, well, I mean, so what would end up happening is, this is what they talked about yesterday, was if they create this district, we're in the service territory district, for those groups that do not join. So for example, a township chooses not to join, they'll have a separate rate for ambulance coverage in that township or city.
And that's fine, except the problem, part of their funding problem is the Social Security, Medicare, or, you know, the Medicare reimbursement rate is X. So they could say, hey, you chose not to participate. The fee's four thousand dollars for us to make a bus run. But at the end of the day, if Social Security's gonna pay them eight hundred, it doesn't matter what their bill is.
Right.
You know, I mean, and that's where we're getting kind of hung. And what I just want to make sure is that the city of Casson, I don't mean this comes the wrong way, if anybody from the county's out there listening, but we kind of get the short end of the stick on a lot of things, because we have the population base here. So we pay more for less service to subsidize the rest of it, which happens, right? We have the population. But the numbers that we're looking at with this is, right now, we give ten thousand dollars a year. They have ten or fifteen to the ambulance service every year?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. And it would probably be up there closer to a hundred and fifty to whatever plus. The Casson would kick in, the township might kick in a couple thousand. Again, we're gonna be subsidizing the whole thing. It's just same way with the deputy service for the county sheriff's office versus our police department. Everybody in Casson pays taxes to the county. We don't get near the services from the county that everybody else in the county does. The SRO situation, the same thing. All the other schools get that SRO service, we get zero. But yet, we're still paying for the county. So I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be funding the whole thing, because we're bigger than everybody else. And then what do we?
You don't have to convince me.
No, I understand.
I definitely understand that. It sounds like maybe the mayor should come with me.
I was sick the last time, or the last two times we had meetings.
But I mean, this is why I need your feedback, because, you know, I'm dealing with a lot of elected officials, and, you know, I I try to make these points. But in the long run, you know, I work for you. And as a council, you know, you're gonna make this final decision. You know, I I think from, if it were gonna work, my preference would be for the special taxing district, because everyone has to participate then. So it's it's spread out, and it's spread out over a population, not a population, but valuation. So you're gonna have more, you know, you're gonna see more players involved. Whereas, you're absolutely right. If you go with a per capita tax through a joint powers group, well, we have seven thousand people, you know, our per capita contribution is gonna be way higher than the service we're gonna have. My understanding of it, to your earlier point, is we cannot just opt out of their service. We're in their service territory. Now, I don't know how that relationship works with with mail, Gold Cross, you know. I know we've talked about that a little bit before. You know, I know they come over here and they do some calls. So I'm sure there might be some way that the state, what is it?
Mutual aid or whatever.
You know, there's there's some way that the state, now, they talked yesterday about how they're going over to Rochester and taking calls for mail half the time. So, because mail isn't gonna cover them. So I, you know, I absolutely, you know, it's not a problem that we're trying to create. It's something that I'm trying to react to. They're telling me, hey, we don't have the money to buy these ambulances, you know.
Wow.
So these Dodge Centers, you know, I don't know.
That's part of the other problem too, is if we get this special taxing, I'm not trying to belabor this point, but if we, if this becomes a special taxing district or a joint powers, a joint venture of some kind, are we gonna have some say in how it's run? Because part of the problem of why they're in such dire straits right now, is they had a half million dollars in cash at the time when interest rates were at the lowest possible interest rate you could ever anything. And they paid cash for new ambulances, and now they have zero money to operate with. Where they could have financed those over a five or ten-year period of time and kept their operating capital whole, which they they don't have any right now. So if we're gonna be part of the special taxing district or joint, will we have a little more
Yeah, I mean, I gotta
import as far as how it's run?
No, and I mean, these are, you know, obviously, these are points we've talked about before. You know, I agree that, you know, management would be a big part of it. You know, they gave me a draft joint powers agreement, and there are a lot of issues with it that I see. So I've reached out to Brian Gruden, who's the city manager, city administrator over in Zimbrotta. Zimbrotta has their own, they participate in a joint powers ambulance group. So I asked Brian, I said, can you send me the copy of your agreement that works as well as it does? You know, because I'd like to see what they do. One of the issues I see in, you know, in the group, the draft that they've given me is who hires and fires staff. So, you know, everything in here says the city of Dodge Center would be in charge of hiring the staff, disciplining the staff. And, you know, I I feel like at least the executive director of this would have to be answerable to the board.
Should be part of the board.
The model would be that, you know, like I said, cities, townships would have representatives on a board that would set the budget. They would guide the direction of that. And it would operate similar to the way cities do. Because we talked about that too, because townships, they operate in a different calendar. There, it's a march to march for setting their budgets. So it's a, it's a kind of a, well, we don't have the money, you know, oh, well, you know. So it would work on a calendar, a January to January schedule. So, so, yeah, I mean, there's absolutely a lot of things that haven't been figured out. And, you know, I don't have all the answers, because, you know, I'm not really the one driving this. I'm just going to the meetings.
We have six months to basically hammer something.
They have, yeah, we have this, they want to start this. They look at their own financial picture is not good. You know, there's this time period where they think they can get something figured out. Now, my point that I made yesterday is that I think it needs to be, really, it needs to be all or none. I think you need to get all the governance, township, cities that are in the district to be involved, or I don't think it's feasible financially, because you need to spread those costs out over a larger area.
And we want to have ambulance service for our community. So this is all just, we have to work through the agreement. Things are changing. But I just want to make sure the city of Casson is treated fairly, but still has the service that we're paying for.
Absolutely. No, so I'll I'll have those, like I said.
Let me know when the next meeting is.
What's that?
Let me know when the next meeting is.
Absolutely. And I'll have this information that I, that's been provided to me in the council packets for our next meeting. So you'll have a chance to review it. And if you have any feedback for me, it's a big hot topic. I know that I I emailed out. There's an event going on. So it's, it's definitely, that was another thing that came up. Dodge Center talked about it with Congressman came up. Dodge Center talked about it with Congressman Finstad, was the Medicare reimbursement rates. Because to me, that seems like kind of a nonpartisan, a smart thing, that rates haven't been adjusted since 2002. Obviously, there's, there's an issue there as well. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Engineers' report. Brandon's not here, but Tim has an update on some road construction, road closure.
Uh, yes. So, on 16th Street, they, we were notified that the Mr. Thompson's connections are going to be made. And of course, there's a football game on Saturday. So, that'll be interesting. But they were trying to do it on the weekends to avoid school interactions. What's going to necessitate is, there's a map included there, where they're looking at closing that small strip to cut in sewer and water connections over to the townhomes that have been constructed there. So, they've let us know that that's their, the plan. We have a pre-construction meeting. So, I will have some more details for you tomorrow. But the idea is that there'll be two single-day closures, one on Saturday and then on November 7th, which is also a no-school day. So, they'll be during normal working hours. And they're going to sign detours. So, the signed detour will route traffic to Fifth Avenue Northeast via 11th and Trunk Highway 57. So, you'll still be able to access off of 57. You'll, you'll go onto the frontage road onto 11th. I, I know it's not perfect, believe me. But I'd like to also get this project done. So...
You, you say that it's during normal work hours. Could you be a little more specific with regard to this Saturday? Because not only is there a football game, I've also got about 100 people showing up for play practice and stuff.
I have the email that was sent to me, which says the closures will be during normal work hours. I don't know exactly what that is.
I'll leave Brandon.
But as I said, I have...
Seven to five, probably. Between seven and five.
Pre-conta miles. So, I can, I will certainly follow up, or I'll ask the city engineer to follow up as well, because, you know, that's what I have as information.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I talked with Brock today, the activities director. And he's already contacted the school that's coming to route buses and people here the right way, so.
So, thank you for that. And we have put it out on social media as well as the city website. So...
Perfect.
I let people know as best we can. And I just wanted to give another little update that, so, it looks like two weeks for Highway 57 for completion. They're anticipating doing that pending weather, of course, but they've had pretty decent weather. So, they're going to, it is that the, on the north section, there is that base coat put down. They want to make sure that's finished up, and then they'll be striping in one day. They'll just stripe the whole project from 11th all the way down to, you know, basically the first street. And then they're also anticipating finishing the safe routes to school, the part that's going to be done this year. If you recall, that the, the portion on 16th Street won't be done until the spring. But, because we don't want to interfere with the school more than we have to. But next, next week, they're expecting to finish that. Some of the large strips are done. The large strip that goes from 9th Avenue, 10th Street up to behind the elementary school was being paved today. They were paving the section that was south of the middle school on the fairgrounds. There's two sections left. There's a section that's north of the community ed building that needs to be finished. It actually required a little bit of extra work there. It's got quite an elevation change. And then the part that's on 11th Street, there's a, that runs kind of on the north side of 11th will be finished next week as well. So, that's what they're anticipating. Rochester Sand and Gravel. You know, it's kind of a race for all the paving companies right now, because they've got about two weeks left. So, that's the news that Brandon had. He wanted to share with me, so.
Perfect.
So, one that goes from the dump road towards 57, that trail, that only goes halfway, is there going to be a posting out there stating that it goes halfway? Because I've had people complain that they get there, and then they have to turn around and go back, because they thought it was a trail all the way through, and then they found out it wasn't.
Yeah. I mean, I anticipate with the road construction next year, that should be reactivated.
What I mean, is there something, way to let people know this year that it's...
We could certainly put it out on Facebook, I guess. I mean...
Or even stick a sign.
A sign, a simple sign or something. Because people have said they've gotten there, they've gone, and then all of a sudden, they're like, dead end. Dead end. But there's no noticing that it dead-ended. And then they're like, oh.
They got an extra bike ride on it.
Yeah.
As I say, the Ralph for the exercise. Why are we complaining about it?